Republic for which stands one nation under God, municipal liberty and justice for all.
Roll.
Alderman Tobin.
Here.
Alderman Jean Francois.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Older woman Rae.
Here.
Alderman Kleiner.
Here.
Alderman Green.
Here.
Alderman Witt.
Here.
Alderman Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
Forms present.
Correspondence?
We have an agriculture and markets report for a dog control officer inspection report and a municipal shelter inspection report.
Feeds and files.
Thank you.
For the good of the city, anyone who would like to address the council, please step forward. I don't know if they understand that. The procedure.
No, no, it's right there.
No, no, for the good of the city, if anybody wants to address the council, please step forward.
Sorry, this is our first time.
Just step up right to the mic. It's alright.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Simone Smith, and that's my husband, Kenyon Smith, and we're with a couple of our neighbors as well. We live in High Rose Ridge, and even though it's like a 10-year development, our block is like a year old at this point. Beautiful homes, but the activity that's going on over there isn't so beautiful. I know there's been a lot of complaints, I'm sure you've heard this over and over, but on Friday, May 19th, at approximately 9:11, a car drove onto the cul-de-sac of Woodrose Court. We live at the end of the cul-de-sac, and the car was parked, and they were blasting music and screaming and running around their car. Authorities were called, gave my name and address and phone number. Now, I don't know if the authorities responded or not, because I never got a follow-up in regards. Also, after that, on May 23rd, at 4:01 a.m., 12 Woodrose Court and 14 Woodrose Court opened their car doors and stole items out of the car. The lady that lives in 14 looked out the window, she's in law enforcement. We're retired law enforcement. She looked out the window and she was gonna go handle it, she said something, they got spooked and they ran. This is an ongoing thing. I have the Ring app, like I know a lot of people do, and it's just an ongoing thing of car breaking in cars and vandalizing our, um... Our, um... Clubhouse, about to say community center. Vandalizing our clubhouse, congregating, smoking weed, being disrespectful. It's just an ongoing thing with the teenagers in our area, in High Rose Ridge. And I don't know what date it was, but back in April, they said a young man got jumped on that street and a gun fell out onto the pavement. Don't know if cops were called or not, I just heard about it, maybe two weeks ago. So, you know, we would love to partner with Middletown Police and come up with a solution, because we know you can't be everywhere at once, we know that, especially being retired law enforcement, we know. But we would like to, you know, help you, you know, in regards, but we really do need more police presence in the area.
Okay.
Okay?
The gentleman right behind you is the police chief, and he's got his card. Okay, anyone else who would like to address the council? Need a question? Yeah, sure. You want the mic?
Ma'am, can I ask you a question?
Go ahead.
Can I ask you a question, you can come to the mic? Are you aware if these kids are from your neighborhood or they're outside from the neighborhood?
We're not sure, you know? The thing is, is that there's a condominium that's right next door, it's separated by trees, and they've made it like they come through the bushes like Children of the Corn, you remember that movie? That's what they're doing. It's annoying, it's an annoyance, you know, because it really is trespassing, but there are absolutely no signs saying "no trespass," which there should be. You know?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Did you want to say something?
I would feel that good evening, that it would really help if there were some signs in there, just saying "no trespassing." And if it has to explain what trespassing actually is. Because a lot of, uh... Seems a lot of the riffraff is coming from neighboring communities that's coming in, from what we've seen. We've been residents up here for now going on 12 years, we lived on the other side of town, along 211th side. So, we've been here for a long time. We're new residents over here to Woodrose. But we've never seen anything like this. So, we just wanna, uh... Any way possible, we can help and, uh... Extend a helping hand with the police here, any way we can, to work, partner, work with you guys to make sure things don't get out of control, as we know it can escalate fast. And we wanna nip it in the bud. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Remarks of the mayor.
Nothing to see.
Alright, remarks of the department heads. Economic Development.
Did you see nothing this evening?
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. This evening, we had a Community Development Agency meeting. Reported that we closed on the house on Wisner Avenue, we have a new homeowner. We're... Linden Avenue is completed, and we're moving towards, hopefully, a buyer there and working towards completing Lafayette Avenue. All our activities, outdoor activities, started this past weekend, we had the farmer's market. We had the summer concerts started Thursday and Friday night, so we had a great weekend and a great start. And this Saturday, we have Debbie Gibson, her encore tour at the Paramount Theater, and it's gonna be a fabulous show, besides attracting people, local people, we're attracting people from the entire tri-state area, Ontario, Canada, London, Connecticut, South Carolina. So, talk about tourism and what a small theater can do for a community and the area. So, we're excited about the show, hopefully heading towards a sellout, and hope there are still some tickets available, so... MiddletownParamount.com. That's all I have.
Any questions for Maria? Thank you, Maria. DPW Commissioner.
Good evening, all. We'll start off with Alderman Massey with the reservoir levels. We're at about 93%. We have kept one reservoir low in purpose because of the dams project that we are doing, which is Shawanganga Reservoir. Really, we have not had any significant amount of rain since May 1st. So, the entire region is almost in a semi-drought, so we're hoping for some rain very soon. The dams projects are moving along very well, there are some leaks, some investigations within the core of the dam, and we're working on them to investigate them to see if any solution or any repair is needed for them or not. So far, it does not need, it doesn't seem that we have to do any extra repairs compared to what we have planned on and what was designed, except for extending some drain system to pick up any leaks coming from the dam. So, that's moving very well. Kench Reservoir, the coffer dam, has been constructed, and the contractors started demolishing the existing spillway and constructing an auxiliary emergency spillway for Kench. Really, I mean, the council members during, you know, if you'd like to take a tour over there, those dams projects or the construction with upgrade, they take, uh... They take place once in a lifetime, so if you wanna come and see what the dam looks like from the inside, nothing exciting, just to see what it takes to get these dams working and functioning, hopefully for another 100 years. This is what we're aiming on, aiming for. So, you're welcome to come, give me a call, we'll be happy to take you there for a ride, show you the actual work that happens. This is really a very heavy duty, and it happens once in a lifetime, the dams project upgrade. Another big project that you can see around the city of Middletown is the traffic operations, and where the contractor has been paving, replacing curbs and sidewalks, and the work is kicking into full high gear, and you can see the improvement. And we're getting a lot of compliments, not much about delays in traffic or being held up. Everybody's appreciating what they're seeing. So, so far, I'm sure there are some complaints about delays in traffic or road closures. We'll try to advertise, we'll try to minimize any road closures, but sometimes they have to happen because they have to dig a ditch across the road for electric conduits or for continuity of the wiring and so on. But if there are any issues, please convey them to the mayor's office or to my office, and we'll deal with them right away. But so far, it's been nothing but compliments, and I appreciate everybody's appreciation for all the work that's taking place in the city. The recycling, I want to compliment everybody, we're noticing a great improvement in the quality of recycling that we're getting, and soon, hopefully, we'll be able to truck our recyclables directly to Orange County transfer station rather than dumping in into our transfer station and, you know, going through them to make sure that they are not contaminated. So, we appreciate everybody's help, thank you for coming through for us and really cleaning up the recycling process. The grass, you know, another, you know, luckily, it hasn't been any rain, so some people are keeping the grass a little bit high, but too high, you know, above 6, 6, 8 inches. Please make sure that your grass is cut, your grass is cut. So, you know, we have collected, so far... We have cut about 57 loans so far, or properties, 57 properties, and collected billed $10,050 for the properties that we cut. So, 57 properties have been cut. So, after you receive the letter from us, please cut your property, cut the grass immediately, and just keep it mowed down. We understand the need to keep it high right now, a little bit high because of the drought, and you wanna protect the grass, you don't want it to burn, and just work with us, please. Once we have the rain, start cutting your grass and don't let it go out of control. And with that, I will conclude my notes, if you have any questions for me.
Question for Jacob, Alderman Jean Francois.
Yes, Commissioner, I know your department has sent out a flowers and water bill far as recycling. You think that's helping?
Yes, yeah, everything, all the effort is helping, yes, in the water bill, in the rental permits, on our website, and in Excel, everywhere, it's all helping, and people are responding. And also, the people who have violated, they're getting the letter from us with pictures. And those, they are also, we're contacting them directly, the people who are in violation. So, we send them letters and pictures, and sometimes we go knock at the door, and people are responding, yes.
Also, received three phone calls in the last two days. One from a resident from Chestnut Avenue, and two from Birch Drive. They were thanking you and your department for cleaning the railroad track. You guys been maintaining, I know it's been an issue in the past, because I think the city's not allowed to be on a railroad track, but that seems to be, you guys have maintained it, that seems to be working fine. So, I just wanna thank you.
You're very welcome.
Your department for maintaining.
Very welcome, yes, sir.
Anyone else, Alderman Johnson.
Could you give us a review of how you think the tree planting went for downtown?
The tree planting went very well, we've done it with, using our water department, to be honest with you. They are the ones who planted it, and we followed all the proper procedure, and we're very happy with it. We spent around $3,500 from a grant that we were able to obtain through NYSERDA for being a clean city, because we are defined as clean city. So, they gave us a $5,000 grant, we used some of it to plant the trees, and it worked out very well, and we're gonna be planting much more.
How many trees did you plant so far, do you think?
Two.
18, 18, 18, yeah, the different ones, ones under the power lines, they'll grow to a certain height, but they're not gonna, you know, we had this.
Yes.
And the other ones, where there is no power line on top of them, they can grow tremendously. And, you know, we've been watering them twice a week, keeping on top of them, and until they take on, and then we'll leave them. We'll trim as need be, obviously. Yeah, thank you.
Alderman Witt.
Thank you. Commissioner, could either you or your office reach out to Orange and Rockland about the paving and repairing of Vincent Drive and Upper Sproat Street? That work was done last year, and I understand that there was time that it needed to settle, but I think that neighborhood's been pretty patient with them. And all the yard work has been repaired, I know you would mention that that needing to be done, that was the way they wanted to do it. So, I reached out to the neighbors and asked if anyone had not gotten their yards repaired and didn't hear back from anybody that they hadn't, so we were wondering if we could...
Right.
Help us.
Yeah.
That next step.
So, you're talking about the permanent repairs.
Yes.
The temporary repairs, it's still, they should not be deficient. So, if there are potholes or whatever it is, or the ditch collapsed, they have to come out and fix it. But what you're asking me is about the permanent repair for the road, right? And yes, that I did reach out to them after I had the conversation with you, uh... Last week, right?
Okay.
And I did reach out to them, I still don't have an answer when they are coming to, with the schedule. But it should be done relatively soon.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other question for Jacob? Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you. And this, the haze, you know, just if you wanna advise the residents about the smoke that they see in the environment, this is coming from Canada, it's nothing local, you know, they should stay indoors, obviously, and close their windows, and, you know, just the people who have some problem with the breathing. Yeah, that's right.
We'll call the fire chief up now, he can tell us about the smoke, too. Come on, chief.
Don't breathe it.
Alright. Stop dropping roll.
Good evening, everybody. This past weekend, other than responding to our emergencies, we did a flag detail for the Special Olympics at Presidential School. It turned out very nice for the school district. And we also did touch a truck over here with the police department at Thrall Park. Went very well, except somebody got real lucky and found $190 in the grass. It was mine. You also have two resolutions in front of you for the fire department. Hopefully, we get everybody's support in them. Other than that, that's all I have, any questions?
Any question for the fire chief?
I knew he was.
Johnson.
Could you just give us a brief update on where you think we're moving with your language for that nuisance fire alarm, false fire alarm code?
Oh, I gave it to Alex on the... The next day after our meeting.
Okay.
Which was, I believe, Friday.
Alright, asked and answered, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, chief.
Okay.
City Treasurer.
Hi, I have nothing for you this evening, any questions for me?
Any questions for the City Treasurer? Thank you. Superintendent Recreation.
Good evening. Just a quick update on what's going on with the wreck and our maintenance staff. The maintenance are right now working on opening up our pools a lot earlier than we wanted to. Our health department is now requiring a full inspection before they give the permit, and our pool inspection date is June 16th. So, we need everyone's help, because they're gonna be swimmable, clear, wide open on June 16th, and if this weather, the heat comes back, if you could call the PD immediately if you see kids hopping the fence and in the pools, because we don't open officially till June 26th, so that's a long time for them to wait with a crystal clear pool. Our maintenance guys are spreading mulch and getting our playgrounds ready. They're doing work around the pond right now, getting ready for the fishing derby. There's a lot of overgrown close to the water edge, so they're getting that all ready for the fishing derby. All the pavilions and the picnic tables have all been freshly painted this year. The reservoir signs on the trails are all painted and updated in brighter colors, so they're more visible. And the garbage can posts have all been painted along the reservoir. Park Patrol is now on every single night, so the bathrooms are open, our outdoor bathrooms to the community. So, if they're at the parks, they have access to the bathrooms. Our recreation staff, we are, have our registration open for swim lessons. We're very happy to have them back again this year. Our summer camp, where registration is open, and thank you to the Middletown School District, because we're gonna be inside at Monhegan Avenue, Monhegan Middle School. Little People Playtime Registration is open. Our pools again open June 26th, and they will all be fully staffed with plenty of subs. And special thank you to Danielle McAvaney, who's been doing all of our certifications for us. And thank you to the high school for letting us get into the pool to do our certifications and recertifications there. June 23rd is gonna be the end of all our free programming that we do, that's partially funded by the Orange County Youth Bureau. We're gonna put those on pause for the summer and then resume again in September with those. If you guys recall, there was the issue with transportation to our Thursday night one, and we got the busing, we put it in our budget, but it's still an issue because the kids are still trying, they're sneaking out and leaving the facility and walking, or they won't get on the bus and they'll walk to our facility. So, as of last week, we did get into Presidential Park. So, we are now on Thursday nights in Presidential Park. So, we're hoping come September, we can get back into there, just to alleviate the kids on County Route 78, even though the staff is constantly telling them, "You can't leave, you can't walk, you gotta get picked up." I mean, some kids were sitting out there till 10 o'clock at night with our staff waiting for a ride. So, Presidential Park, we're happy to be in there, the kids love that facility way better than our gym. So, it is a good change. All of our spring programming is wrapping up. And before you, there's two things, a special thank you to the Lions Club for their annual donation for campership scholarships for our camps this summer. And the other lengthy thing that you had is all our fee changes. If you have any questions on that, we went over it. All of our office staff reviewed it. We compared a lot of the, majority of the fees to the, our local communities and other recreation parks in the area, and we're right on target with the other fees and the usage of our pavilions and travel teams, non-for-profits using the facilities, all those rates are gonna go up. So, if anybody has any questions on any of those.
Any questions, Alderman Johnson?
I had one question. In my day job, I talk a lot about ticks and people going golfing and gardening, and now they have a tick in their ear. Do we have any, or should we have any signage in the reservoir trails? Because not everybody is that aware that if you hike through there, you need to really do, especially if you have a four-year-old child that's hiking with you. Do we have any signage for a reminder about Lyme disease or tick checks?
Uh, we don't, I can look into see if the county has any, they do like the free smoking, and I know at one point, they were giving out free tick removal kits. I can see if they have those along with any signage that we can get to post also, because it is...
I think it would be a good, if we can, it would be a good idea.
I know our maintenance guys get covered from a day of mowing, and so I can't even imagine the reservoir trails.
Thanks.
Alderman Witt.
Uh, thank you. I know the fee schedule adjustment that came up also in the Recreation Commission, and you had mentioned, how long has it been roughly since any of these, some of these fees have been adjusted?
Our camp fees aren't changing, but a lot of, like our clinics, they haven't been changed in over, I'd say, five, six years. Our park fees has, as well, has been quite a few years as well. And the Recreation Commission bring up the point of everything else has increased, the hourly, really, an overtime rate for all of our maintenance guys and the cost of electric and everything else.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Alderman Kleiner.
Thank you. The fishing derby is this Saturday, is that right, from June 10th?
Yes. Yes, yes.
Eight to 12, and I think there's two more days to sign up, right? Online, you have to do it online, but in case, in case anyone wants to sign up.
Yes.
Want to make sure they know they still have a couple days.
Yes, still sign up for the fishing derby.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you, Eileen. City Clerk.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to thank the community and the council and the mayor for their support of our first citywide yard sale last weekend. It was overwhelmingly positive experience for many of our residents. Over 200 people signed up and participated. We're already thinking about ways that we can improve it for next year, if this council would so indulge and the mayor would allow us to do it again. We were already talking with Eileen about making the maps more friendly for folks and to better organize the list for the community. So, we noted some of the concerns and suggestions on Facebook and in social media and through phone calls through our office, and hopefully, if we have it again, it'll be bigger and better next year, but thank you.
Alright, any question for Rick? Alderman Tobin.
Could you go over the Civic Plus, like we're switching, is that gonna replace Nixle, is that...
Come on, chief. Chief can bring it up.
Good evening. So, the Civic Plus is very similar to Nixle, it would be a replacement for Nixle if the council does approve it. It's a more robust, user-friendly, has more features, more modern. So, we did some demos with it, had some of the department heads come and join in on the demos to see the features that it has. We could break it up so the different departments have access to it. One of the unique features that I really like is you could geofence an area. For example, if you had, if we had like a traffic situation in Amcheur area, and we want to notify the residents that subscribe to Civic Plus in that area, we could draw a circle around that area, and just the people within that circle that were subscribed would receive a message. We do have the capability, from what the vendor tells us, we could import our Nixle users into this program. And if that doesn't come true, what we could do is we could send out a final Nixle message saying, "We're transitioning to a new platform and please, you know, sign up for the new platform." It's gonna take a little bit of time to implement it, so it probably like this fall, if it gets approved. The other nice thing is it's directly connected to our new website that the city's bringing onboard. So, when there's a message put out on Civic Plus, it would go to the website and vice versa. So, it's a lot more user-friendly.
And if you have any report from the police?
I have nothing unless you have something for me this evening.
Any question for the police chief? Alderman Kleiner.
Chief, I just wanted to say thank you to you and the police department. I thought Kids' Day this Saturday was terrific, and the turnout was terrific as usual, so, thanks for doing that.
Thank you.
And also, the Youth Leadership Academy graduation yesterday. The kids just seemed really involved, and just to let people know at the end of that, everyone wanted to get their picture taken with this police officer or that officer. So, the bonding was really good to see, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you for the support. With Alderman Kleiner speaking above, is a Kids' Day celebration that was this past weekend. Officer Gallagher did an amazing job putting that together, putting the vendors together, the program together. Really, really great job, and all the other officers that came through. And the Youth Leadership Academy, we held the graduation here last night, that's our third Youth Leadership Academy. Each time, it gets a little bit better, I feel, we grow the lessons, the relationships, the whole experience is amazing. We have great support from our local vendors with some food, we get a lot of money, not just through the city, but also through the youth bureau, so it's been a great, great program. So, we're very fortunate that you continue to support that.
Alright, any question for the chief? Thank you, chief. Remarks of Alderman, Alderman Massey.
I just have a couple things. Last weekend was a pretty busy one, starting out with the concert in Degman Square, and it goes on every Friday night, and Maria and her staff has done a great job, and I hope to see you at 7 o'clock, come down and enjoy the music and the people. Number two, Special Olympics, school district, I want to give a shout out to Superintendent Amy Creden and her entire staff. It was absolutely an amazing time. If you missed it, next year, I know they have it for the next three years, please do yourself a favor and come up. It was an all-volunteer. Everybody that was up there helping out was volunteered. It was amazing to watch the kids in their faces when they accomplished something. It truly is inspiring, and I hope that you all get a chance next year. Also on Saturday was the City of Middletown Kids Celebration 2023 at Thrall Park. Thanks to all the sponsors, the Recreation Department, Police Department, Fire Department, and all the people who participated. And finally, farmer's market began, and it will continue to grow, come down every Saturday morning, thank you.
Alderman Witt.
Thank you very much. Yeah, the Special Olympics, that was a tremendous day. Thank you for supplying the flag, that was really a nice touch in the beginning when you got in there. And, you know, Alderman Green and Alderman Massey were there as well, and it was just, it's definitely something that's... were there as, as well. And it was just, it's, it's definitely something that's good for the area. It was, it was eight schools, counting Bowsies and hundreds some kids, probably three, four hundred families. And it was all positive and it's just, it ju, it was just really, a really a great day. So, um, the, the district did do a very good job with that. Um, and this weekend, uh, the ninth and the 10th is the, uh, the state track and field championships, um, at the Fowler Field Stadium Complex. So everybody will be here. So if, uh, you see, um, out-of-towners, welcome them. They do need to eat and they do need to shop. And, uh, I know this has been a very good thing for our community in the past, so, uh, hopefully we can make everybody feel welcome and, uh, and it turns out to be a great, uh, weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Aldman Green?
Thank you. Yeah, talk about a way to, uh, end May and start, uh, the unofficial start of summer and wish you could clone yourself about 10 times this past weekend. It was phenomenal to be at that, uh, that celebration there with the Special Olympics. Um, from the moment you, you got out of your car and saw the crowds and the families walking in and, uh, those who weren't from this district who even saw the facilities were, were blown away by that. But, uh, as Alderman Massey said, just the faces of, of every participant and their family members was just, um, enough to really make your weekend. Uh, you know, and then headed straight to the, uh, the kids' celebration, which was packed and, and amazing as well. Um, you know, and I, I didn't get a chance to make it to the farmer's market last weekend, so I'll make it this weekend. But, uh, you know, just so much going on. Middletown's putting our best foot forward. Um, and really with, with a lot of people apparently coming, uh, overseas now to see Debbie Gibson, um, which is amazing to hear. Uh, I think we're really, you know, we're, we're, we're doing things right here and it's really showing and just proud to be a part of it all. Um, and I will just say that, uh, Alderman Kleiner and I will be hosting our, um, ward meeting here on, uh, Monday at seven o'clock PM. Uh, so we hope to see you there. Um, I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Alden Kleiner?
Thank you. Uh, I wanna thank the American Legion Lodge 151 for putting on their, uh, Memorial Day ceremony. It, it was very nice. Um, I hope they and the town of Walk Hill can get together so that they don't happen at the same time, maybe do them together or like we used to. But, uh, that's, that's for, uh, the future. So that was very nice. I wanted to remind people that, um, the Juneteenth celebration is gonna be in, uh, Degnan Square and that comes up, of course, on June 19th. And, uh, that is a celebration of when word of the Emancipation Proclamation finally got to Texas two years later. So, uh, when I, when I lived in Texas, we celebrated that for a long time. Uh, so I'm, I'm glad to see that the rest of the country realizes it and it's, and, uh, I know the, um, because it matters 24/7, they do a great job with that. So I hope people can get down to Degnan Square. I think that starts at noon. Um, today is also the, uh, 79th anniversary of D-Day, June 6th. And, uh, I don't remember it. I was a little over two months old, but I have certainly heard about it all my life. And if you don't really know what was sacrificed that day and the odds that that generation went through to fight fascism in Europe and keep us free, uh, it's, it's worth, it's worth going back and really understanding that history. Um, and I also today, uh, wanna recognize this, this was a tough weekend for longtime Middletowners because we lost Bob Benedict from Benedict Memorials and Hillside Cemetery, Benedict Monuments. And, uh, that business is maybe the second oldest business in Middletown, continuing business. So, uh, Bob will be missed. And, uh, I was also sorry to see that we lost Tom Lloyd and people who know and remember Middletown and Lloyd's Store and what a, what an impact Lloyd's had on Middletown and on retails and supermarkets in general. Um, and, uh, Tom was always a big part of that. So, and as the head of the, uh, the Antique Car Club and, uh, he, he will be missed. So, uh, that's it. And hope to see people next Monday. Thank you.
Alden Ray?
Uh, good evening. I was unfortunately unable to attend a lot of our weekend festivities because I live at a ball field. And sometimes more than one at a time. But, uh, also a great thing that goes on here in Middletown, um, is, you know, our youth sports and our town sports, our Little League. Huge fan, obviously, 'cause I am always there and, uh, my entire bank statement reads Middletown Little League and it's a very affordable way to feed my family in the spring. Um, but, uh, Special Olympics, I used to volunteer for that when I was in high school myself. What a wonderful thing that we have it here. Um, I couldn't think of better staff to run it than the people who work in our district and our town. Um, but it's been, uh, a great spring and I look forward to our graduations. Uh, we have a lot of things to be proud of here in Middletown, our kids and what they accomplish. And I just love this time of year because we really do get a chance to kinda celebrate that. So that's all I have tonight.
Aldman Johnson?
Thank you. Uh, with the event coming up with the school district, I wanna remind that they're willing to distribute our, our restaurant guides. So if we make them available, that would be cool. It would be good publicity and then it helps these spectators figure out where they're going. Um, on another note, uh, about, I think about five years ago, the Main Society of Middletown got their grant. We did some infrastructure. COVID came and everything got put on hold. If you drive by that facility out on 17M, you'll see that the new expansion is framed out. Will probably double the size of the facility and, uh, the staff is very excited about that. Uh, we've been, if you try to surrender an animal to the Middletown Main Society, you know that more often than not, you're told, "We really can't help you out." So if we double our volume, it'll be, uh, it'll be good for us, it'll be good for the community as well. So keep your eye on that. And there's a ton of fundraisers, so if you're so inclined to do bingo or any other things, um, they have a lot of things on their calendar for the next couple of months. Thank you.
Thank you. Aldman Francois?
Yes, good evening. Thank you. Uh, first, I'd like to thank, uh, Alderman Kleiner for stepping in for us to our fourth ward constituents meeting this weekend on Saturday. Uh, fortunately Sparrow had other arrangement. Uh, my wife and I received a phone call and we had to leave town at the last minute to actually babysit in North Carolina. So, uh, I wasn't able to make it to the meeting, but Alderman Kleiner stepped in for us and, and, and take care of business. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Alden Tobin?
I just wanna repeat the, uh, the Lions Club, uh, fishing derbies this weekend. Registration's 8:30 to 9:00. Uh, everybody gets a hot dog, a soda. We have prizes. Uh, there's tons of trophies, so it's a good time had by all of, you know, no experience necessary. So come on down.
All right, new business.
Good evening. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey authorizing the run for tw- the 2023 run for downtown.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, second by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt authorizing amendments to the Parks and Recreation Fee Schedule.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, second by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green accepting a $900 donation from the Middletown Lions Club for Parks and Recreation Department scholarships.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, second by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner accepting a $15,000 donation from the Run for Downtown and a $7,100 donation from the Middletown Volunteer Fire Companies for the Fireman Joe Restoration Project.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, second by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ray authorizing a proposal for the Fireman Joe Restoration Project to New York Art Factory in the amount of $107,000.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ray, second by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson accepting a $2.5 million grant from the Dormitory Authority of the State of New York to be applied toward the construction of the downtown Middletown parking garage.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, second by Alderman John Francois. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois authorizing a five-year agreement with Flock Safety for the Police Department's License Plate Reader System.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois, second by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin authorizing an agreement with Civic Plus for the city's emergency alert system.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, second by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey accepting $2,000 in donations from the Minnising Valley Rotary Club, Appleby McPhillips funeral home, New Beginnings Montessori School, Piclo Cucina Avino, Star Paint, The Old Erie Brew Hub, and NiComCo for the National Night Out Against Crime Event.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, second by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
John Francois?[1635.12]